Downboard Battle Mountain and Austin Board of County Highway Commissioners, May 26, 2022, here on Highway 50, or here at 50 State Route 305. We can also attend via audio conference or by go-to meeting. Um, Kathy, would you lead us in the pledge?
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have a moment of silence and please remember the children in Texas. Lander County Commission may break for lunch from 12:00 PM to 1:15 PM. Any agenda item may be taken out of order, may be combined for consideration by the public body, and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Commissioners' reports on meetings, conferences, seminars attended. Patsy?
No report, thank you.
Okay.
Um, yes, the one I have is just an update from the Battle Mountain General Hospital. They've hired a new doctor. And they've hired a new doctor with 25 years' experience. Um, let me look at my glasses. Um, the little information that I have on him, he's board certified in family medicine experience, acute swing, long-term patient care. Um, he spent some time in inner mountain health in Las Vegas, didn't love like the city, and so he migrated this way. So I think he'll be starting, um, some point around July. That's the only information I have.
Sure. Okay. Brian?
Uh, no, we're there.
We've been working on the cricket abatement, working with Bert and Donnie and Jerry at the county yard. They got one guy that's putting poison out one or two. And I did help a little bit here and there, putting the bay out for the crickets. Hopefully, we'll try to keep them out of town.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Well, thank you for that.
I, uh, I've got a couple of communications, but Bert gets them too, so he'll read them. Hey, Bert?
Hopefully, I cover them, Art. Um, good morning, Commission. So I want to first tell you guys that, uh, and the community, maybe if you guys can spread the word, we're going to post it on our marquees, that, uh, Thursday, June 2nd, the Navy's going to be landing a helicopter over here in our soccer field, and they'll be letting, uh, kids tour it and, and adults, anybody that wants to sit in it, ask questions, kind of go through their, through their equipment, they'll, they'll be there from 10 to 2. So, um, that's kind of good news. Spread, spread that around.
The soccer field out there?
Yep, by the sports complex on Lemare Road. Um, if you guys can, can pass that around, like, say, it'll be posted on the marquees as well. Um, then I would also like to report that as of, uh, May 20th, effective at 12:01 AM, the governor, um, rescinded his state of emergency. So we are no longer in a state of emergency per the, per the governor. And the last thing that I have is, um, we have an agreement here that I want the commission's, um, permission to sign. We, myself and Ted believe that that's where it should be, but this will be in a closed session, um, at the end of the meeting. Um, we'd like to come in. This is for the opioid, um, deal that's, that we've talked about many a times, but I just wanted you guys to know that at the, at the end of this meeting, especially you, Commissioner Clark, if we can go into a closed session to discuss that.
You want to do that right away?
No, at the end of the meeting.
Yeah, the, the two communications I have, Health and Human Services and Environmental Protection.
Oh, are you referring to NDPs? And that is, uh, that is out here north of town. They are doing some soil samples, and they've, they've removed a bunch of contaminated soil, um, at what used to be Coastal Cam, I believe. Um, so they are doing some remediation on some ground contaminants out there, and that's the, that's the information that Commissioner Clark's speaking of.
Okay, public comment for non-agendaized items only. Persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend and make comments on any non-agendaized item, on the board reading if any, and discussion of those comments at the discretion of the board. All public comment may be limited to three minutes per person, again, at the discretion of the board. Reasonable restrictions may be placed on public comments based upon time, place, and manner, but public comment based upon viewpoint may not be restricted. Is there any public comment? Well, I have a public comment. The candidate's night up here, I got cut off, and I said that I got a threat from BLM. An individual who was there went to the BLM here, the Bureau of Land Management, and filed a concern against me. It was the Black Lives Matter that put a death threat against me, Sheriff Ron Unger, my wife, and Senator Sederma, Meyer, for a video that we put out for the NRA. Had nothing to do with the Bureau of Land Management. So I just want that out there. And I am in contact with the Bureau of Land Management on this incident, and, uh, we'll see what happens. Thank you. Consent agenda. All materials listed under the consent agenda and considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action without extensive discussion. Any number of, any member of the board or any citizen may request an item be taken from the consent agenda discussed and acted upon separately this, during this meeting. Consent agenda materials are available at Lander County Clerk's Office for viewing, and copies are available for nominal charge. Okay, one, approval of May 22nd, 2022 Agenda Notice. Two, approval of March 24th, 2022 Meeting Minutes. Number three, approval of April 14th, 2022 Meeting Minutes. Four, approval of April 28th, 2022 Meeting Minutes. Five, approval of May 12th, 2022 Meeting Minutes. And six, approval of payroll change requests. I'll make a motion that we approve items three and six. Need a second? Brian made the motion on three and six. JR?
What about one?
Oh, we need one in there.
We need one in there for their agenda posting?
Oh, sorry, yes, one, three, and six. Thank you.
Brian amended his motion. JR seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have two, four, and five? We don't have those in yet?
No.
Okay. Commissioners, for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove the payment of bills. Do we have any checks? No checks?
I'll make a motion to approve the payroll. Paying the bills.
I'll second that.
JR made the motion. Brian seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Five, unanimous. Number two, Commissioners, for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove the Lander County final budget for FY 2223 and the submission to the Department of Taxation. Are we on time?
Yes.
Yes.
Have to be. Um, so there's two changes to the budget from the tentative. Um, the first one is in the Buildings and Equipment Fund in 029. Um, the assessor is asking for a new truck, and so I added that in there. If you guys approve that, if not, I will take it out. Um, it was, I added, I think she gave me a quote for $40,000, and I think I added it in there for $42,000 or $43,000.
So a new truck, what's, what's the current age of their, their truck they have now?
So their old truck has given them a lot of problems, since they're wanting to transfer it over to Road and Bridge, where we have a couple of mechanics to work on it constantly, and give the ladies in the office that are running around something more dependable.
And it's a Toyota Tacoma that they're looking at getting. And then, um, the second change was in the CCP fund, but I actually need to make a change on it because I calculated wrong. Um, it's for the purchase of the golf course, uh, from the BLM, and, um, it's on your guys' agenda today to discuss, but I wanted to add it just in case you guys approve it. But Bert and I had talked about adding an additional $20,000 on top of the $431,000, but I only, um, I thought it was 413, so I need to add another $18,000 because I did not add enough. So I'll make that change, and then if you guys want to approve it with the change, and then I'll go fix it and bring it back.
That's the total amount?
Yeah.
431, that's what I thought it was, 431.
So we'd be adding 451 with the additional 20.
So what's that extra 20,000?
So the extra, the extra 20,000, I asked Lakin to add on there and to discuss with you guys because in case there's any other closing costs or anything else that comes in later after that, I'd like to make sure we have the budget to cover it, um, but for no other purpose.
Okay, clarify it again for me. We were at 413, and we added 18?
No, I thought, um, we were purchasing it for 413. I transposed the numbers, so I added 20 on that. So I added 433,000 into the budget instead of 451, so I just need to add that 18,000.
I remember the, the original number being, this is special, we're lucky to be able to buy it.
And just, just for clarification, if there is any other cost past the 431,000 that we were given, we will bring that back before this commission.
Okay, now, Ted?
Yes, sir.
We will be the owners. If we go through with this deal, we be the owners and...
Yes, and fee simple, absolutely. That's for all purposes.
Right, that's been the problem.
Otherwise...
No conditions will exist if we purchase it.
Other than that, no changes to the budget?
Need a motion?
Thank you for your hard work on it.
You're welcome.
I'll make a motion that we approve the final budget.
Oh, seconded. Oh, seconded. Brian made the motion?
Did you say with the changes?
Yeah, with the, with the noted changes.
Brian made the motion. JR seconded it. Any, any public comment?
Did your second include the, the changes there?
Yes.
Okay.
I want the record.
Right. Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Good job, Lakin.
Thank you.
We know that takes a lot of your time, but at least it's almost over.
You had to work hard to get these things in on time, but we always do.
Okay, be sure that we all sign it too before we leave.
Right. Okay, number three, a discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove, enabling the commercial property assessed green energy program in Lander County to facilitate the access to capital by Pure Growers LLC for the completion of their cannabis grow facility in the Battle Mountain, Nevada.
So I've been asked to ask you guys to table this item for the next meeting?
I, I do have a question, um, though, on it while we're tabling, and this is for Ted. Because I read through the information, and it said the way that the, uh, the way that they passed this in the legislature was for municipal? And I wondered, did that, that also, did it say counties separately, or were included under that?
It's, we're, we're, it's, this is a nationwide program. It's, well, it originated in, in California, of course, uh, but it's for the cities or counties or any municipality.
Okay, because it only said municipal when I read the information, so I just wanted to double check.
Okay, we tabled that. Number four, for discussion, possible action approved, disapproved, a free swim day for the public on July 4th at the Recreation Center for the annual Fourth of July celebration in the Elquis Park. Take it away, Sean.
Good morning, Commissioners. Um, so in the past, pre-COVID, of course, in the past, um, the Rec Center has been open from 12 to 4, and it's on the Fourth of July, and it's always been free to the public. But this body has to approve that, so it depends on what you guys want to do.
I mean, it's historically, it should be free every day.
I suggest we stick to what we've done in the past, 12 to 4, and free to the public.
We usually have something going on on the Fourth of July in Austin, too, and I know it's not here, but we could always...
We can put that on the next agenda, Patsy, if you would like.
We could always bring it back on another agenda item because, um, what's fair for Battle Mountain is fair for our Austin residents, too, so I'll maybe look into that when you put them on.
Okay, I'll make it real fair. Let's make it free every day for Austin and the Rec Center. I've been trying to do that forever.
I don't think it's agendized that way.
Question, since I'm the one helping organize this, do I need to abstain since I'm the one that asked Bert to put it on the agenda?
Your organization's not in charge of that.
No.
So...
Okay, I just want to make sure.
There's no remuneration back to her at all.
No, okay, I just want to make sure.
And it's a yearly, we usually do it yearly, except for last year.
I'll make a motion that we approve the free swim day, uh, for the public on July 4th at the Recreation Center, um, for Battle Mountain on July 4th.
My second.
Any public comment? Yeah. Make it free every day. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Passage unanimous, and make a note that we will have this on the agenda for Austin next time. For discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove the Lander County liquor license for onsite sale for...
Number...
Number, uh, five.
Number five.
Okay, why things aren't right for some reason. Uh, number five, for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove, this board to request proposals from insurance agencies to be our agent for PoolPact matters. Amen.
Okay, so I reached out to Wayne Carlson just to get some background on why we use agents since we have PoolPact already and why we can have that middleman. And he said, uh, many years ago, they, the Board of PoolPact approved, uh, to use agents because they have so many counties that they oversee, and they said that the agents just kind of help gather all the information for the county and then submit it to PoolPact.
So then, does this need, this needs to go out for bid?
That's up to you guys.
That was, yeah, that was one of my questions, because I sat on the PoolPact board, um, for the hospital, actually, when that first went into effect. And the whole idea was for the agent to, to assist us, because right now, we go directly to PoolPact. They do assist us in some things with, um, our liability if we have a accident and things like that. But, um, when they came before us and, and went up with the price, we asked PoolPact then, well, wait a minute, um, don't we have a choice of our agents? And they said, well, yeah, I guess you do. We were, I don't know how it got appointed that, that many years ago, because we're talking, at least, what, 15 years at least? Um, and I didn't know whether the commission could change and we could actually be in there with negotiations. Why should we pay, you know, 10% if we can get an agent for 6%? So I said, can't we look into this? So that was what is coming about. So this is our decision today whether we actually will take bids, um, from the agents around and...
It's really proposed.
Put it out for a public bid.
So we put it for proposal, out for proposals?
Mm-hmm.
Instead of bid, you're putting it out for big proposals?
For a proposal from them, yeah.
I mean, aren't we required, my, because the amount is...
This is an exception. This is professional services.
Okay.
So we're asking, you don't, you don't have to use the bid process, you use the proposal process. So...
Well, I think it's a good idea.
And he did, um, attach a best practices document to guide us in selection of the agent. So if you guys do choose that, to go out to get proposals, um, when you're trying to select who you want to use, I could forward that on to you guys if you wanted to kind of read it.
I think PoolPact can guide us a little bit on what we can request and what we, what we need to do on that, too, but, um...
I believe that's the document.
Yeah.
That's the best practices is from PoolPact.
Yeah, I think that's from PoolPact?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to make a motion that we, um, very definitely go out for proposal for an insurance agency to represent us in PoolPact matters.
I'll second.
And I would just ask if we have a deadline on that because we have to approve our renewal with PoolPact. Usually, we do it the first meeting in June. I can ask them if we can move it to the second, um, but our agent compensation is included in that renewal. So right now, it's the compensation that Hanukkah Insurance is asking for. So if we did go with someone else, we'd probably want time to change that before we accept the new renewal with PoolPact.
What do we pay presently to PoolPact?
Don't quote me, but I think it's like, oh, to PoolPact?
To PoolPact for the agent?
This isn't, this isn't to PoolPact. This is, this is to our, um, agent. And, and currently, our agent is, uh, is Suzie, Suzie Davis, I believe, down here at, at our local insurance company. Um, so it's not to PoolPact. And I think that's some of the confusion that some of the people have seen on this is they think that we're actually trying to change from PoolPact, and that is not the case. We're just, we're just talking about the broker. And that, so that's all we'll be, we'll be finding out.
And our broker, Suzie Davis?
Correct.
At Hanukkah Insurance, yes. And, uh, we just got the renewal for, um, FY 23, and it, I don't have the numbers in front of me, so it could be wrong, but it was like $460,000 to PoolPact, and I think like $32,000 to Hanukkah or something.
So then, when do we need to have the proposals backed by?
Well, we need to reach out to PoolPact and see what they, what's acceptable, and then we got to see, you know, kind of some of these dates for advertising our, in the, you know, in the paper, so...
So as soon as we can put it together, it's, it's the criteria.
Just to, uh, to try to clarify my understanding on it, so why haven't we ever done this before? Was it because PoolPact did the selection, or...
No, they, the agent is up to the county on who they, they can provide a list of people they kind of recommend, but it's your, your guys' discretion.
We've never questioned it before, Brian.
Oh, okay.
And, and just for the record, there's no complaints, you know, with, with Suzie. It's just a matter of fairness, making sure that we're, we're kind of circling back on things, so...
Well, taxpayers' elders being spoken to.
For sure.
Well, usually, if, in years past, Suzie would come to school board meetings and to commissioner meetings on these topics, would she?
She's out of town right now.
She, uh, yes, usually she does, and she, um, she missed this year's because she, she was out of town when the insurance, when, when they came and provided their...
Okay.
Their updates, so...
Okay, everybody understand?
Well, you guys made a motion, but I don't think anyone voted.
So, yeah, we, um, Patty made the motion, and I seconded it.
Patty made the motion. Kathy seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Okay, looks like we're going to open up the liquor board. We'll now close the Lander County Commissioners, and we will open the Lander County Liquor Board for discussion and possible action, approve, disapprove Lander County liquor license for onsite sale for John Lincoln and Charles Skinner with Strategic Gaming Management LLC, DVA Big Wheel Casino, located in the Garden Gate Petroleum Convenience Store and other matters properly related there, too. Good morning, Sheriff Sergeant Jones.
Yeah, Sergeant Jones, Sheriff couldn't make it today, so he asked me to come in here. Um, he said he's went over there, inspected, there's no issues.
Everything's good.
All right, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the liquor license for on sale for John Lincoln and Charles Skinner with Strategic Gaming Management LLC, DVA Big Wheel Casino, located at the Golden Gate Petroleum Convenience Store.
Second. Kathy made the motion. Brian seconded it.
Yes.
Any public comment? I have a public comment. Commissioners do not decide where sandwich shops go. There was a big bone of contention that we didn't need another sandwich shop, and the Commissioners put one out at the Golden Gate Petroleum, and we don't have anything to do with that. So, in favor?
Aye.
Passage unanimous. And we'll now close the liquor board, and we will go back to...
What it says down here as far as opening and closing the...
Well...
Adjourn the meeting of Lander County...
Oh, okay. Sorry, Bill. We're going to adjourn the meeting of the Lander County Liquor Board and reconvene the meeting of the Lander County Board of Commissioners. Okay, so now we're on six. For discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove the purchasing of Mountain View Golf Course from the BLM in the amount of...
It should be four. We need to, on the record, amend the amount from 413 to 451.
To 431, and our budget will reflect the 451.
Shouldn't we have done that in the original, instead of accepting the agenda?
It could have been done there as well. Yes, you can do it in, in both places. You can do that during the consent agenda, you can come back and ratify that item, or you can make it clear on the record. So you can go both ways.
Okay, thank you. So...
The amended amount, we amended it from 413 up to 551.
No, 431.
431.
431.
We amended it from 413 to 451 because the original amount is 431, and then we had to add $20,000 on.
The, the $20,000 was added to the budget. The, these numbers were transposed. The price is 431.
So, so just for clarification, Commissioners, what is what we did is in the budget, the $20,000 that we added, we asked you to approve that. Um, that way, we have the, the allotted money if needed, but the 431 is what we want to not to exceed, and if it does exceed that 431, that's what I would bring back to you guys, and we would implement that $20,000 for any additional fees.
Okay, because I remember 431 being the cost every time it was discussed, and when I saw the 413, okay, they transpose the number.
Yep.
So...
My question is, oh, sorry, Patty, go ahead.
Okay, mine, mine was on our, um, our, our, actually, lands bill. Because we're asking for this in the lands bill, too, right?
Correct.
So, um, this is something we have to, uh, work on right now, and we have to do because we're on a timeframe, my understanding is, right? Okay, so if we do, is there any way we get any portion of it back if it's okayed in the lands bill?
Yeah, that was my question.
So we can do a 20% down payment, um, that, that is one of our options, and still proceed forward with the lands bill, and if it does pass on the lands bill, there's no guarantee that we'll get that 20% back. But then, once we get to that 120-day threshold, we would have to execute this agreement and pay the full $431,000. Um, we are hoping that the lands bill passes before then. If it doesn't, we will use this as a, as a, you know, as a good faith working with, um, you know, the national BLM and moving some of these other lands hopefully into our possession as well. So them are the two kind of approaches we're using.
So it's, it's in the budget, but we're only going to do 20% for 120 days? Is that right? Okay.
Yes, and, and we have to execute the final, the final purchase of this within that timeframe, um, whether it is via the lands bill or, um, we, we pay outright. I believe the 20% down was going to be kind of the, the hold and hope, and, um, our BLM just wants us to move forward in good faith that, you know, we are going to purchase it one way or the other.
John just walked in.
Okay, good deal.
Sorry, John, I couldn't remember the half.
No, I didn't, uh, none of you guys were moving this fast. Where's your button, John?
Your button?
John Trevi, uh, Field Manager for the Mount Lewis Field Office, BLM. So, yeah, I didn't know either. I wasn't, I was confused about the numbers. I thought those two numbers got flipped. So 431 was the appraised value based on pre-development. I, I believe the date, the, the next date we need to be concerned about is, is June 28th. Uh, so the federal, what allows us to move forward with this was the publication in the Federal Register. This is a lands transfer, so, uh, these things need to be elevated to this national publication on the Federal Register. That was published in, on, uh, April 29th. So that explained that there's a 45-day public comment period, and then, uh, which, we've got, uh, at least one comment already, but that's an internal thing. We'll address those comments as part of the administrative record. Then also from February, uh, April 29th, 60 days from that date would be the soonest we can issue a sale, a letter, an offer to the county. So say on day 61, we'll provide a sale offer letter to the county, and that date, whatever that date is, say, June 29th or June 30th, will give you a 20-day timeframe to either outright per... will give you a twenty day timeframe to either outright purchase the full four hundred and thirty-one dollars, or uh, put down twenty percent of that four hundred and thirty-one dollars. And then, from that date of that letter, that sale offer letter, you have, was it a hundred and twenty or a hundred and eighty? It might be a hundred and eighty days to uh, finalize that, uh, the rest of that uh, amount. Now, if for some reason the county doesn't move, wanna move forward with this purchase, that twenty percent is non-refundable. Uh, it's just something to consider. Uh, now, when you factor in the lands bill, where we are, where the county is with that, uh, there's some things to consider with that. That may never go forward. That may, you know, it just may not ever get passed. Who knows? Uh, in the event that it does, more than likely, the lands bill will direct the BLM to do exactly what we've already done. Exactly what we've been spending the last three to four, five years uh, doing. And so we could get to the exact same place five years from now, and the county would still have to pay whatever appraised value at that point would be.
Since we've actually been leasing it though, um, is it that we do have first right of refusal? Because when you put it on like that for the public and do everything through the Federal Register, what if somebody else came up with four hundred and thirty-one thousand?
Uh, you are the only, you're the only uh, entity here that's, it's a direct sale to the county. There's no other parties that can purchase this. So if it doesn't, so if the county does not move forward with the purchase, it'll go back into the current uh, uh, the current um, regulatory oversight, which is the, it was patented prior back in the nine, eighties or nineties under the Recreation and Public Purpose Act. That has limitations on how it's managed, and we, we talked through that a little bit. The big, the big issue was uh, any profits that are generated from this patented land through an RMPP have to go directly back to the, into the running of that, of that art, of that, of the intended purpose.
And, and my understanding is, um, just for clarification on this, when they did the appraisal, it did not include any of the, um, the buildings and the wells and all the, all the additions that we have put into it. It was raw land only, right?
That's correct.
Boy, that seems so high for Battle Mountain.
It's, it's a hundred and seventy-two acres for four hundred and thirty-one thousand. That comes to about twenty-five hundred dollars an acre.
Yeah.
Well, my concern is how much money we've put into this property, uh, not owning it. And as time that we do own it, I was in Washington DC when the lands bill was taken there by Western Guard and Kyla. It was presented, but was there enthusiasm? No. So, I, I'm considering that in, in, in my decision, and I, I just wanna own this because it will end so many of the problems.
Do you understand that, that he said if the land bill does go through, we would still have to purchase it for this amount regardless?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure everybody understood that.
I don't have faith in the lands bill.
Well, even if it went through, if it went through, we'd still have to purchase.
Still gonna have to do it, so let's get it over with now.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, and also then, if, if the county doesn't move forward with the sale, we will have no choice but to administer it under the current patent, and, and that means there's compliance issues, so we'd be dealing.
Clubhouse is gone.
Yeah. And the, and the snack bar at the, at the ball fields, and probably some other things, but I'm not sure.
Unless our Battle Mountain BLM office wants to run a golf course, I guess it really leaves it back out to us.
We're not in that business.
And I think from the very beginning, it was a misconception that there's no compete. Um, so when we put all that stuff in there, I just don't think that that was the understanding, but that's exactly from the very beginning, from the RMPP how it was, there was no compete, and we built all that stuff and went to um, competition with um, local businesses, like we put in the bar and the snack bar and all of that, so that was there from the beginning, and I just don't think people will lie, so.
Right, right.
So, do we have an estimate of what we've got tied up in that right now?
No.
You don't want that.
It doesn't, and at this point, it doesn't. It's a moot point.
So I suggest instead of risking the twen- the twenty percent, why don't we just buy it?
That's, that's what I think too, JR.
Because that's, that, I wasn't clear on that fact, that if the lands bill went through, I thought for somehow that, that got us out of having to purchase it. But it doesn't, is what you're saying. So why, why would we do the twenty percent to extend to see if the lands bill went through? What would be the benefit of that? Nothing.
There wouldn't be, yeah, that.
I'm still under that understanding. I haven't read anything different, but maybe one of these guys have. I've not read anything different, that if the lands bill did go through, that we, because my understanding of the lands bill is that they would transfer that property into the county.
That's what I was, that was my understanding.
However, I'm not sure, um, if, if I'm, if I'm misrepresenting that, because maybe there's something that they read that I didn't.
John, do you have?
Well, I, I, I don't know the full details uh, on this. I've never really worked on a lands bill uh, in this district. But I'm guessing there, well, there's two processes to transfer public land into private ownership. Uh, one is through the RMPP Recreation and Public Purpose Act, which for the golf course, we've already done. The other option is to do these land sales, this direct land sale. Those are the two options, and, and we've already done one, and we're at the end stage of another. So I believe that all the lands bill will say is that BLM needs to transfer this, uh, this parcel to the county, and the two mechanisms we have available are what we've already been working under. So, so the lands, you'd still have to purchase it. So the lands bill doesn't supersede the laws that are already in place. The Recreation and Public Purpose Act, and then the regulations to dispose of public lands through a land sale. I, I'm not sure what you've heard from anybody else, though, I, but I believe that's all, the, all we have available to us, either right now or through the lands bill. We'll just be repeating the, the process. If, if, if the sale, this current sale doesn't go, go through.
Well, maybe, I mean, maybe it would be wise just to do the twenty percent, since there is kind of a, it's kind of unclear. I mean, uh, John has his testimony, and I've had my understanding this whole length of time, that it could be possibly transferred to us. I mean, I guess it's, I don't, I don't think we'll be that lucky.
Even if it is transferred, because it's the type of patent it is, you, at that point, if it's transferred, we can, we still can't have the bar or the restaurant out there.
So, so your understanding was that even if it was transferred in the land bill, that we would still have to pay it?
Yeah, well, no, you, no, you don't have to pay it, but you can't have your golf, your clubhouse out there. You can leave it and use the bathrooms, but you can't have your bar or your eatery out there, because the.
Oh, if it is transferred to the county?
It's still, it's still a non-compete.
It's, it's patented land right now, under the, but with different sideboards.
Yep, I see.
That's why I say it's eliminating all these problems. I mean, the problems over the last eight years with the golf course are what brought it to the BLM's attention in Washington DC. That's what spurred the local BLM to contact us and say, whoa, you know, we need to do something here. This is the something that we need to do, and, you know, I, I support it.
I will just add that the uh, the purchase of this could help us significantly in lands bill if it does go through. It, um, it could help kind of push some of these other parcels that we're requesting. Um, so there's some good faith measure in this as well.
Any more public comment? Okay, I'll call for a vote. Oh, come on, I'll check.
I just, uh, my name's Lenny Shepherd. Anyway, I, when they first built that, and they had the plans for it, there were supposed to be fairgrounds included in that. Does anybody have any books on that? That's where they were supposed to move the rodeo grounds. Nobody knows, see.
Don't know anything, and all the land around there now is bought up in private, right?
Well, no, the, the fairgrounds was supposed to be where the, the golf course is, but there was supposed to be enough ground there to put in the fairgrounds.
No, I never even heard of that.
New Commissioners, goes by the wayside.
That's beyond my time.
Yeah.
Okay.
When, when was the clubhouse built? What year?
Uh, it's in the early eighties. Somewhere in there, probably eighty, they started, well, I don't know about the clubhouse, but the ball fields was the first things put in.
Okay.
And that was in the probably eighty-four, eighty-three?
The, the Fair and Rec Board was to be involved, and with the Fair and Rec Board being involved, that's when they were to do what you're talking about, Lenny, is the fairgrounds.
Yeah.
But then the Fair and Rec Board got out of it, and it was just the county.
Yeah, I, I don't know what happened, but, but I, I do know that that was the plan.
Originally.
Wouldn't it, we're gonna get this land, we're gonna have the fairgrounds here, we're gonna have the golf course here, nine-hole golf course, and the ball fields.
And it was could be the Fair and Rec Board that was getting behind it.
Right.
Yeah, you're right.
It's gone.
We've got our history. Get this straight on that. I'm gonna call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
She made a motion.
She made the motion.
All about this guy, okay, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we uh, purchase the Mountain View Golf Course from BLM in the amount not to exceed four hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars.
So, the full amount?
The full amount.
Okay, I'll second the motion. Four hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars for it, okay.
JR made the motion. Brian seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? I guarantee none to pass you down to Mr. Lee. Okay, who's taking the first?
John. We'll get you somewhere between the twenty-eight and twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay, number seven.
This conference will now be recorded.
Discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove, placing a sign for acknowledgement and honor all the past rodeo champions on Lander County property. The sign will be placed on Main Street next to the Welcome to Battle Mountains sign. Okay, now this is Lander County champions, right?
This is, this is a placard for.
Well, well, Lenny will explain it to you, and he has a picture, Bert, and it's, it's better if he shows it rather than me explaining.
And then make sure when you speak, Lenny, to put your button on, please.
And could you guys also make sure you're hitting your button? People that are on cannot hear you. They can hear Art and Patty. You must be hitting it. The rest of you, they can't hear.
Yeah, mine's open all the time.
Yes, yes.
You guys are gonna have to share, Ted.
It's alright.
So, I, I have a question. Um, what about the new champions coming up? Do we have a way to tag on to that, to add the new ones?
Yeah.
I mean, this is, I think this is, this is National Rodeo Week right now, and we've got
Center.
some in Lander that are attending, so you never know.
Oh, it's got a picture. Anyway, uh, I was approached about six months ago by some older couple, and they want to remain anonymous, and they said when uh, these high school kids won the national finals, like in nineteen seventy-two and seventy-three, Dan Philippine won it, and Joe Marvel won it. And then, at that time, that was like in the seventies and early eighties, Battle Mountain was a turquoise capital of the world, and the bear right capital of the world. And it was also the, uh, saddle bronc capital, saddle bronc writer capital of the world, but there's three of those guys went to national finals all in the same year, from Battle Mountain. Mike and Joe, and Dan. And anyway, I was approached, and he said, he would, he should have done this forty-five years ago, and he didn't do it, then he said he should have done it twenty years ago, and they didn't do it. And so he asked me if I would do the legwork, he would buy a plaque and get it put on Front Street. So I said, well, what do you want? Brass plaque? I didn't know what he wanted. He said, go for it. So I did, and that's what I come up with.
I think it's pretty cool.
And it's, it's paid for, it's pretty spendy, and all he asked, or they asked, was they'll donate it to the county, and the county maintain it. But he, but he wants it on Front Street.
That sounds good to me. Well, I'll tell you what, Lenny, four years ago, uh, I went, we went back to Hartsorn, Oklahoma, that's Pittsburgh County, and I had to get some propane from the feed store. They saw the Nevada plate, and they asked me where I was from.
Yep.
And guess what?
I know.
They knew Battle Mountain.
I know.
In Hartsorn, Oklahoma, Pittsburgh County, the population has not changed, the same number
I know.
fifty years, and they remember Battle Mountain from high school, national rodeo, and national rodeo events.
I was in Santa Fe, New Mexico, at a little trading thing there, you know, the, the Indians, they trade their turquoise jewelry and stuff, and I was just walking along there, and my wife had some turquoise on, and the guy said, where'd you get that turquoise? I said, Battle Mountain, and they were Native Americans, and that guy said, you from Battle Mountain? I said, yeah. First thing they said, you know Joe Marvel?
There you go, yeah, I think this is a great idea. Easy to do, Bert?
Easy peasy.
Okay, I, I still have a concern over it, though, because I think, th- these are wonderful feats that, that our local people have done, and I think it's a great idea, but it's, but I do think we need to think about the new people that still will be. We're gonna have some more.
Add a plaque and put on the bottom of it.
There you go, just add another one. Make enough space to add it on.
So, if we leave a little bit more room after this, maybe, more room here where they could put it on, or something to tack it on, I don't care how to do it.
Put it on the, he could probably make another one like that and put it on the bottom, you know?
Yeah.
But it's been a few years, but there might be another one, but I don't think there's gonna be three, and what's the odds?
Probably not that quickly, no. I mean, it, it's.
But anyway, he, he, uh, that sign's all powder coated, and it's uh, aluminum on the back.
Looks like a big belt buckle, I like it.
Yeah, it's forty-seven by, forty-seven tall by sixty-seven. The poster done, only thing
Oh, okay.
that I'm sure is.
I thought this was a draft.
No, it's done.
Oh, okay.
And, and that's what happened.
You just want a place to put it, okay.
I, I, I didn't think he'd get it done that fast. He said, well, two months. So I thought I'd have time to get everything straight, you know? And then he called me up, and he said, I'm having so much fun with this. I'm done with it. I said, you are? And he said, yeah, well. I said, okay.
So, a question, um, have we considered maybe getting hold of the high school rodeo, having some kind of ceremony when this is put up? And have these people here, and recognizing and all of that?
I don't know if, I, I don't know about that. I, I think.
You just wanted a.
Joe's in Weatherford, Texas, and.
And they're all, they all know about this already?
No.
Nice surprise.
Why don't we set it up to do it on the Fourth of July?
Boy, that's a good idea.
You guys want to pay overtime for us to install it?
Yeah, right, and it's, it's, it's short two bolts to put it up to, so I'll buy the bolts if the county can't afford it.
Bert can find that.
Four inch by half inch bolt.
We got our handle there.
Okay.
You good, Bert? Fourth of July?
No, I won't be in town.
I'll have it up before then.
We'll just get it up.
Um, I don't know the.
I think I just put it up, and then, just get it up, move from there.
Yeah, I'm not sure that you guys want to, uh.
He doesn't have to go up on the fourth. If you wanna celebrate the fourth, you just put a bag around it and keep it, you know, private until you're ready to take it off. Otherwise, I mean, it can go up on our regular workdays.
There was, there's a lot of kids that won state championships in the, in the rodeo, but he, they, they said no, they want the, the national finalist, and they won it, so we're not trying to eliminate anybody, that's just somebody's request, so.
And, you know.
And Battle Mountain High School, they graduated from Battle Mountain High School.
And didn't Joe go back to the, didn't he get put on the Hall of Fame? Didn't he make?
Yeah, that's on that buckle, yeah.
It says rodeo.
Colorado Springs.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the placing of the sign for acknowledgement and honor of all past uh, national rodeo championships on the Lander County property. The sign will be placed on Main Street next to the Welcome to Battle Mountain sign.
My second motion?
Patty made the motion, Brian seconded. Any public comment?
I'd like to just say something.
One up, Colt.
Nope, oh, sorry. Colt Nelson, for the record, just like to say, what?
Colt Nelson, for the record, just like to say, what a wonderful idea, 'cause one of the things that makes Battle Mountain unique is its history. And, and Joe Marvel and Dan Filippini, Max Filippini sent me a video of his dad at the national finals rodeo, and that was really something. And it inspires other kids to think they can do something as well when you see something like that. And it just adds to the town. I think it's a wonderful idea and places that history where it needs to be, 'cause that's what our town's made up of, you know, people like that that made a difference. So very cool, I'm glad to see this coming in.
Well, you know, not to interrupt you, but we've got a wrestling team here for years. Somebody ought to think about that.
You wanna talk to me about wrestling?
They take a big plaque.
Huh?
They take a big plaque to cover all the state championships.
But, but I'm just saying.
Yeah, exactly.
There's, there's something, you want some history. Name another town that has that many state championships, so.
We have the most wrestling, double A state wrestling championships in the, in the, in the state, and we probably have more wrestling state champions.
Right.
Than any five or six high schools. Yep, we got.
But I, I'm sure.
You know, the thing that impressed me the most about this county are some of the people that came from this county. When you meet Doc Edgar, God bless, he beat Vito Amofermo in Madison Square Garden, and he's from here. He beat Vito Amofermo in a ten-round tune-up battle before Vito Amofermo had his championship fight, and Doc beat him. It doesn't matter where you come from, it's what you do. Pee Wee Armilia played for the, some New York team for a while. You can go on and on. Yeah, we need to celebrate this so that we can show kids, this is what you can do.
That's good stuff.
So we got a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, passed unanimously.
Hey, thanks.
Thank you, Lenny, thank you, Colt. Number eight, for discussion, possible action, approve, disapprove, parcel map application for Summit Engineering. This is a division of one large eighty-one point two-six acre parcel into four parcels. A, A being three point three-one acres, B being three point three-oh acres, parcel C being three point three-oh acres, and parcel D being seventy point one-five acres located within a portion of southwest corner of section thirteen township thirty-two N and range forty-four E APN zero eleven dash oh two oh dash one nine. This was approved by the Planning Commission on May eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, along with all recommended staff report conditions and following special conditions. Extend water and sewer, fire safety, life, extend road to existing yellow brick road standards.
Good morning, Commissioners, Aaron Martinez for the record.
Jessica Walker for the record.
Ones, first, I'd like to start off by saying thank you to Ms. Jessica. She was out, um, on some, she had a surgery, and so while she was gone, she was still, uh, helping us out in the planning department and responding to emails, so we sure appreciate her dedication. Uh, with her absence, I, uh, will help with this application. Um, so in your staff report, there's actually six conditions listed there, and we'd like to make a seventh condition, please. Uh, we'd like that the applicant, uh, shall apply for a zone change in order to achieve the minimum area requirements listed in under the, under the A-one zoning district. Uh, so that did get missed in the Planning Commission, we do apologize. Essentially, this parcel map application is to split some parcels down. Currently, that zoning district is an A-two zone, which is a five-acre parcel minimum requirement. So we'd like you to add one condition that they apply for a rezone for those parcels in order to come into compliance for an A-one zoning district.
Is there other A-one around there?
Uh, there is not, but because it's a, um, because of that type of zoning district, A-one and A-two can be.
They can be intermixed?
Yes, they can, and that is not a spot zone. And I've confirmed that with the assessor's office.
Okay.
Um, but overall, this application, uh, came in two parts, actually. There's a second application that was adjoining this that did get denied by the Planning Commission. What they were doing was asking to split this parcel, as shown in this current application, into four parcels. Uh, from there, the, the second application actually requested to then split the fourth parcel down again, another four parcels, and under NRS statute, uh, that is not allowable. It must fall under the tentative map process. So the Planning Commission, I believe, made the right decision where they approved the first application, but then denied the second on that premise.
I see the application was submitted, uh, application for Summit Engineering. Who's the actual landowner?
Uh, the actual landowner, bear with me, sir, on that, is an Emerald Land Company LLC. So that is the actual owner, um, and true applicant of this application. Summit is just representing them. Uh, so with that, we recommend, uh, a conditional approval of this item with the, uh, six conditions listed in the staff report and the seventh condition, uh, stating that the applicant come and apply for a zone change with the Planning Commission uh, in order to achieve the minimum requirements of the A-one zoning district.
Ted, do we have to read all six conditions, or can we just say it's a staff report and reference it?
You could, you can just say, uh, the staff report, uh, with, with the verbal, with an additional verbal staff.
Right, right, okay. Okay, I will recommend a motion to approve the parcel map application for Summit Engineering. It's a division of one large eighty-one point two-six acre parcel into four parcels. Parcel A being three point three-one acres, parcel B being three point three-oh acres, parcel C being, if I'm on the right one, parcel C being of section thirteen. That's the one that we corrected, right? Okay, section thirteen township thirty-two N and range forty-four E APN zero one one dash zero two zero dash one nine. This was approved by the Planning Commission on May eighteen, two thousand twenty-two, along with the recommended staff report. The conditions and the following special conditions were to extend water and sewer, fire safety life, and extend road to existing yellow brick road standards. So we will include the six conditions of approval that were on the staff report as a condition, and also a condition that they go to the planning and change zoning to A-one.
I'll second the motion.
Pass unanimously, motion, Brian seconded. Is there any public comment? Okay, let's have a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass unanimously. Thanks, Aaron.
Thank you, guys.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Bead.
We had, we published a notice in the newspaper that we were gonna carry on an auction at ten o'clock.
Okay.
That was, wasn't put on the agenda, so we had published a new notice that we were gonna have the auction on the twenty-third, is it the twenty-third?
Yes.
Twenty-third is the next one.
On the twenty-third, so that's going out for publication. But I would like you on the record to ask if anyone's here for the auction that was set for ten o'clock.
Okay. I've had a request to ask the public if there's anyone that is here for the auction. No?
No, so for the record, it, we have republished an amended notice, and the auction will take place at ten o'clock on the twenty-third of June.
Twenty-third of?
June.
At ten o'clock?
Ten o'clock, and that's in the paper and will be published for the next two weeks.
Okay, and for the record, six twenty-three, ten AM, the, the auction will take place, so.
Thank you, Commissioner.
You're welcome. No public comment on that, no questions concerned, okay. Agenda item number nine, for discussion, possible action, approve, disapprove, a parcel map application for Kenneth Reeks. This is a division one, one point seven-two acre parcels into two parcels. Parcel A being zero point seven-three acres, parcel B being zero point nine-four acre located within a portion of section nineteen township nineteen N and range forty-four E APN zero zero five dash five eight zero dash oh two, zoned MRC. This was approved by the Planning Commission on May eighteenth, twenty twenty-two with all recommended staff report conditions. Good morning.
I have the applicant here, Ms. and Mrs. Merks, if they'd like to make any statements.
You know, I might also ask, when we put these on the agenda, I really would appreciate it if you'd also put, designate, whether it's Kingston, Austin, Battle Mountain. I mean, we can all look up an APN, but when people look at the agendas, they don't do it. So I would make it much easier for us.
Absolutely, we'll definitely do that.
And this one is an auction for everybody.
If the applicant has anything they'd like to add?
I'd like to say that, uh, this process has been long and educational, very educational. And with Mr. Martinez's help there, we've been able to get here, and I really appreciate that.
Is this raw land, or is there something, there's buildings or?
This is, uh. It's the piece up above the courthouse.
You know, with the little.
Joe Raymos's property.
Okay, but, but is there something on, on the property now?
We have our, our trailer and our, and our shop and our carport on one part of it, which is the lower half, and the top half is got cars parked on it from the neighbor. And so, yeah, so we're, we're trying to eliminate the whole situation and give him that piece up there. I don't need it, I don't wanna cut the grass, so that's what we're doing.
Okay, thank you.
So i- in your staff report, we're recommending a conditional approval. That one condition is that the applicant shall dedicate an easement for utilities, including a ten-foot public utility easement adjacent to the roadways. Uh, the map does currently satisfy that requirement. They do appropriately identify access to this separated parcel. I think Mr. Merks is under a adverse possession type situation where there's literally someone there occupying his land. It sounds like, uh, they've worked that out, um, separately between the two private parties, and it sounds like he's being more than generous and, and doing this parcel split. And so with that, staff recommends conditional approval.
I'll make a motion, we approve the parcel map application for Kenneth Merks. It's a division of one, one point seven-two acre parcel into two parcels. Parcel A being point seven-three acres, parcel B being point nine-four acres, is located within a portion of section nineteen township nineteen N and range forty-four E APN zero zero five five eight zero dash zero two, zoned MRC. This ha- has been approved by the Planning Commission on May eighteenth, and it is approved along with the recommended staff report conditions, which are four that are listed, and also to, uh, update the current APN numbers on the, the, our current miler.
I'll second the motion.
Pass made the motion, Brian seconded. Any public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passed unanimously. Congratulations, folks.
Thank you for showing up.
This is great.
I really appreciate your help.
Absolutely, have a great day. Okay.
Thanks, Aaron.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Aaron. Correspondents, reports, future agenda items.
Uh, Commissioner, before we get to that, should we go into a closed litigation?
It's not because you came, babe.
This conference is no longer being recorded.
Oh, okay. We just finished our litigation meeting, and I think we are needing a motion to adjourn.
No, Correspondents' Reports.
Oh, okay. Number ten, Correspondents' Reports and Future Agenda Items. Go Reports.
I do, oh.
All done.
Um, a brief, uh, some update or something on the library, can we get that, please?
Um, also, al- along with the library, we were gonna set up a board other than us at one time, too, so are we ready for that, or we're still gonna wait? Uh-huh, what?
Are you ready, you're not ready for the board?
No, no, we, we anticipated six to twelve months for that.
Okay, so we're still okay with that, just an update, okay.
I mean, you guys are the board right now.
No, I know that, but, but I know we need to appoint another board, and I just wondered what your timeframe was on it, so, okay. Um, we do have to think about, uh, one of our meetings in Austin. Last year, we did it in July, I believe.
And we do one meeting a year? I was talking to Ted, why, could we do it two, three times a year?
We could, but if you remember, the last time we had it, the only person that we had show up other than staff was the one who had an agenda item.
Which is all right, and they, they, that's, I don't, I don't have a problem doing that. Then they can say, we're there, whether they show up or not.
I don't, I don't have a problem if you'd like to all come to Austin, but please remember, um, that, uh, you know, if, I mean, if you wanna go twice, that's fine, but I don't think we wanna do it anymore often. It does cost extra money to come down there and bring our whole staff and everything to do that, so.
We could, we could actually stack an agenda down there for Austin projects. Put like the, the road bridge projects and the things that are gonna affect the southern half of the county. We could stack an agenda for that, if, if the commission would like.
And we did one year, we did do it twice. We went in the fall and we went in the summer.
Yeah, I think at least we should do it every six months, yeah, for them.
Okay, well, we're due. I don't know if you wanna come down in the middle of December or not, but.
I don't.
We are due in July, um, like I said, we were there last July. So I just think we should put it on the agenda, and then we'll talk about what we'd like to do.
Anybody else? Okay, we'll open up for a public comment? No public comment? Need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, Brian made it, JR seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Muted.
Bye, I'm.
This conference is.